Good evening. The Everett School Committee will come to order, and I'd ask the clerk to call the roll.
Student Rep. Riley Avalar.
Present.
Mr. Barrows.
Present.
Ms. Cardelo.
Present.
Mayor Di Maria.
Here.
Ms. Lambert.
Present.
Mr. La Monica.
Mr. Mangan.
Present.
Mr. Marcus.
Mr. McLaughlin.
Ms. Sarni.
Present.
Chairwoman Cristiano.
Present.
Seven members present.
We have seven members present. We have a quorum. Could you all join me in saluting the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic which stands one nation on the guard, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, I have a few housekeeping items. A school committee member, Vice Chair McLaughlin, is unable to attend due to a family, previous family commitment. And Mr. Marcus is not feeling well, so he will not be attending. And Mr. La Monica has indicated he will not be able to attend this evening, tonight, as well. So that's what I have for information or notices. So I would ask the superintendent to read the first order of business.
Yes, thank you. So item number three, or Roman numeral three, is the reading of the records from September 7th, 2022.
Suspend the reading and place on file.
Second.
Motion is made in second to suspend the... suspend the... suspend the reading and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. But ask the clerk to read the next order of business.
Roman numeral four is public comment.
Make a motion to open public comment?
A second.
Motion is made in second to open it up for public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. You have opened it up to public comment. Just to remind everybody, two minutes, two and a half minutes tops. And we have up, first up, we have Tony Raymond. Tony, can you come forward and state your name for the record?
You can stand or I say... I don't know. Hi, the microphone. Good evening, School Committee. Tony Raymond Ward III. I wanted to come and speak in support of the kids, the students. I attended the last city council meeting, and they said that Opera funds could be used to repair, update Pope John, need be. Please, we are asking you all, as the school committee, to support that. There are many of us holding out on hope that the city council votes to hold on to that school and property on the 26th. We will be there. Please attend and support the students. There are many of us that simply don't want any more residential units. Many of us will continue to call out bad behavior, bad decisions, corruption, and patterns that don't make sense. Thank you.
All right, deal. Next up, I have Paula Staridi. Paula, come forward and state your name for the record.
Good evening. First, is there any update on the walkthrough on the renovation costs from the city? I figure with the mayor and the chief of staff being here, they could provide a status on both. So maybe you can invite them to provide an update during tonight's meeting. Next, I wanted to thank the school committee members who supported sending the letter to the city council for the need to keep Pope John as a school to alleviate the dangerous and unhealthy environment in our schools. I also wanted to thank the superintendent for attending the city council meeting, along with the school department staff and the school committee member who attended the meeting in support for the kids. There were many residents, some teachers, some medical professions, parents and grandparents who came to voice support to have Pope John used as a school to help alleviate the overcrowding. I am somewhat troubled that any member on the school committee would vote for any delay to address the overcrowding in our schools. Our schools have not only become unhealthy learning environments, but now are unhealthy and safety concerns as well. Every day that nothing is done, these kids suffer and are subject to a subpar learning environment. Hasn't this issue been kicked down the road long enough? The overcrowding didn't start one or two years ago, but has been brewing for many years out of neglect by previous superintendents and the mayor's administration. The superintendent shared that her staff flagged that overcrowding is a deterrent to the kids' learning, and their test scores will no doubt be negatively impacted. I don't think any of us needed to have the superintendents tell you that learning is impacted and test scores will suffer as a result of overcrowding. I hope so anyways. I would like to thank you all, I would like to ask you all one thing. When you vote on anything to address overcrowding, can I ask you all to think about the kids? Early education is precious time for kids to learn and develop. So when you say wait till October or whenever, think about the kids. Every decision made here, you have one goal in mind, and that is what is best for the kids at Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Staridi. So seeing only two people listed on the sign sheet, is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say a few words before we resume with the regular order of business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
A second.
Motion is made in second to close public comment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
The ayes have it.
You have so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Roman numeral five is the report of the student representative.
Ms. Avalar.
Good evening. In regards to sports, after their loss against Severian on September 9th, the Everett Crimson Tides football team bounced back with their win against Somerville last Friday. They are now 1-1. Our cross-country team won their meet against Lynn on Wednesday, September 14th. The volleyball team beat Lynn Classical in a very tough match that went up to five sets on Friday, September 16th. They are now at a record of 2-3. The girls' soccer team had a game today against Boston Latin Academy, resulting in a 2-2 tie, while the boys have a game Thursday against Lynn English. For EHS clubs, EHS clubs are starting to begin, with the Yearbook Club having a meeting today and the EHS Wave Club having an informational meeting this week. For seniors, tomorrow night in the Crimson Cafe, there will be a senior parent night, where information about common application phrases and responsibilities of students and teachers in the application process will be provided. EHS students also have the opportunity to sign up for in-school college visits. Some recent visits have been Boston University and UMass Dartmouth, with future visits from UMass Amherst and Suffolk University. Students are able to access and sign up for these visits through their Naviance accounts.
Well, thank you for that. Seeing any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Just place on file.
Motion is made in second to accept the report and place on file. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
The ayes have it.
We have so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral six is the report of the superintendent. Item number one is the superintendent's update. As I have done before, I'm actually foregoing the superintendent's update in order to focus on the topic that I know is at the forefront of everyone's minds. So as such, I will move on to item number two, which is an update on the administration's proposal to alleviate overcrowding through a reconfiguration of programming and school space. So as the city deliberates, the potential for Pope John to help us address our obvious...
You're the summer sports officer.
Oh, I sure do. Oh, you know what? This is the law. Just one second, sorry. Thank you. I would have done that the entire time. This is the time to push the conversation forward, even as we recognize that this decision does not rest with me, the EPS, or the school committee. The situation does, however, call for decisiveness over contemplation. My thanks to all of you for hearing me out during our September 7th meeting, and to the city council for advancing the discussion at its September 12th meeting. At this point, I do feel obligated to declare what my team and I have determined makes the most sense for Pope John. Our best, most far-reaching option is to use the property for 7th and 8th graders. This would fully leverage the space to the best extent possible, providing significant enrollment relief to all five of our K-8 buildings. This proposal, or any proposal for extra space, I just want to say, does have the backing of the Everett Teachers Association. I did speak with the president, who also said that they were very excited about the prospect of this as a former graduate of Pope John. This proposal would also eliminate the need to place portable classrooms on school properties all over the city. Pope John would represent a tremendous commitment from the city. As such, I want to make sure we are providing the biggest and widest impact in return. And I do believe that a 7th and 8th grade building would fulfill that obligation. Our initial walkthroughs of Pope John have been very encouraging. The building is structurally sound and robust, including the roof. We would need to widen accessibility access points into classrooms, which can be done by removing the closet area and completing some vent work. We would need to, and want to, knock down some non-load-bearing walls, especially on the 5th floor. If asbestos removal is needed, which it is, we would seal off entire floors at a time, most likely on the 5th floor, and for some rooms on the 4th floor, especially in areas where the floors need to be re-tiled. The building also features an atrium that spans the height of the entire building that will facilitate access for any work crews, materials, and equipment. If we need to install a new AC system, we could replicate the work at the Webster, which also makes it easier for cool air to be provided throughout the building. There would need to be sprinkler systems installed throughout the school. Overall, there is definitely much to be done, but the good news is that it seems completely doable. Pope John is, in fact, a very viable option.
And speak in support of the kids, the students. I attended the last city council meeting and they said that opera funds could be used to repair, update Pope John, need be. Please, we are asking you all as the school committee to support that. There are many of us holding out on hope that the city council votes to hold on to that school and property on the 26th. We will be there. Please attend and support the students. There are many of us that simply don't want any more residential units. Many of us will continue to call out bad behavior, bad decisions, corruption, and patterns that don't make sense. Thank you.
All right, deal. Next up, I have Paula Steridi. Paula, come forward and state your name for the record.
First, is there any update on the walkthrough on the renovation costs from the city? I figure with the mayor and the chief of staff being here, they could provide a status on both. So maybe you can invite them to provide an update during tonight's meeting. Next, I wanted to thank the school committee members who supported sending the letter to the city council for the need to keep Pope John as a school to alleviate the dangerous and unhealthy environment in our schools. I also wanted to thank the superintendent for attending the city council meeting, along with the school department staff and the school committee member who attended the meeting in support for the kids. There were many residents, some teachers, some medical professions, parents and grandparents who came to voice support to have Pope John used as a school to help alleviate the overcrowding. I am somewhat troubled that any member on the school committee would vote for any delay to address the overcrowding in our schools. Our schools have not only become unhealthy learning environments, but now are unhealthy in safety concerns as well. Every day that nothing is done, these kids suffer and are subject to a subpar learning environment. Hasn't this issue been kicked down the road long enough? The overcrowding isn't, didn't start one or two years ago, but has been brewing for many years out of neglect by previous superintendents and the mayor's administration. The superintendent shared that her staff flagged that overcrowding is a deterrent to the kids' learning and their test scores will no doubt be negatively impacted. I don't think any of us needed to have the superintendents tell you that learning is impacted and test scores will suffer as a result of overcrowding. I hope so anyways. I would like to thank you all, I would like to ask you all one thing. When you vote on anything to address overcrowding, can I ask you all to think about the kids? Early education is precious time for kids to learn and develop. So when you say wait till October or whenever, think about the kids. Every decision made here, you have one goal in mind and is that is what is best for the kids at Everett. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Eady. So seeing, are there only two people listed on the sign sheet? Is there anybody else in the audience that would like to say a few words before we resume with the regular order of business? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to close public comment.
No second. Motion is made and seconded to close public comment. All those in favor? Those opposed, the ayes have it, you are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, Roman numeral five is the report of the student representative.
Ms. Avala.
Good evening. In regards to sports, after their loss against Severian on September 9th, the Everett Crimson Tides football team bounced back with their win against Somerville last Friday. They are now 1-1. Our cross-country team won their meet against Lynn on Wednesday, September 14th. The volleyball team beat Lynn Classical in a very tough match that went up to five sets on Friday, September 26th, September 16th. They are now at a record of 2-3. The girls soccer team had a game today against Boston Latin Academy, resulting in a 2-2 tie, while the boys have a game Thursday against Lynn English. For EHS clubs, EHS clubs are starting to begin, with the Yearbook Club having a meeting today and the EHS Wave Club having an informational meeting this week. For seniors, tomorrow night in the Crimson Cafe, there will be a senior parent night, where information about common application phrases and responsibilities of students and teachers in the application process will be provided. EHS students also have the opportunity to sign up for in-school college visits. Some recent visits have been Boston University and UMass Dartmouth, with future visits from UMass Amherst and Suffolk University. Students are able to access and sign up for these visits through their Naviance accounts.
Well, thank you for that. Seeing any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Just place on file.
Motion is made and seconded to accept the report and place on file. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. We are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral six is the report of the superintendent. Item number one is the superintendent's update. As I have done before, I'm actually foregoing the superintendent's update in order to focus on the topic that I know is at the forefront of everyone's minds. So as such, I will move on to item number two, which is an update on the administration's proposal to alleviate overcrowding through a reconfiguration of programming and school space. So as the city deliberates the potential for Pope John to help us address our obvious and-
You're the summer sports.
Oh, I sure do. Oh, you know what? This is the wrong presentation. Just one second, sorry. Thank you. I would have done that the entire time. This is the time to push the conversation forward, even as we recognize that this decision does not rest with me, the EPS, or the school committee. The situation does, however, call for decisiveness over contemplation. My thanks to all of you for hearing me out during our September 7th meeting and to the city council for advancing the discussion at its September 12th meeting. At this point, I do feel obligated to declare what my team and I have determined makes the most sense for Pope John. Our best, most far-reaching option is to use the property for 7th and 8th graders. This would fully leverage the space to the best extent possible, providing significant enrollment relief to all five of our K-8 buildings. This proposal, or any proposal for extra space, I just want to say, does have the backing of the Everett Teachers Association. I did speak with the president, who also said that they were very excited about the prospect of this as a former graduate of Pope John. This proposal would also eliminate the need to place portable classrooms on school properties all over the city. Pope John would represent a tremendous commitment from the city. As such, I want to make sure we are providing the biggest and widest impact in return. And I do believe that a 7th and 8th grade building would fulfill that obligation. Our initial walkthroughs of Pope John have been very encouraging. The building is structurally sound and robust, including the roof. We would need to widen accessibility access points into classrooms, which can be done by removing the closet area and completing some vent work. We would need to and want to knock down some non-load-bearing walls, especially on the 5th floor. If asbestos removal is needed, which it is, we would seal off entire floors at a time, most likely on the 5th floor and for some rooms on the 4th floor, especially in areas where the floors need to be re-tiled. The building also features an atrium that spans the height of the entire building that will facilitate access for any work crews, materials, and equipment. If we need to install a new AC system, we could replicate the work at the Webster, which also makes it easier for cool air to be provided throughout the building. There would need to be sprinkler systems installed throughout the school. Overall, there is definitely much to be done, but the good news is that it seems completely doable. Pope John is, in fact, a very viable option for us. So just to briefly recap, our enrollment projections call for steady and annual increases over the next several years. This underscores the obvious appeal that a ready solution like Pope John will provide to us. As we have noted in the past, we are approximately 1,200 students over capacity at present, so any notable spike will make a difficult situation more difficult. I also showed this slide last year as well. Here you see the overages by school. And this is not an issue that emerged overnight. The need for additional school space has long been undisputed in this city. In fact, the plan that we are presenting tonight is not new. These are plans that were formulated in the past with input from people who still work in the city. Plans and proposals have been made regarding the renovation of Pope John, the renovation of the old high school, and even the creation of a campus at Everett High, all of which predate my tenure and are very useful and which I will review tonight. So there are no surprises here. The EPS has been overcrowded for a while. Action, on the other hand, is what I believe we have lacked. We can take the time to investigate further how we got to this place, but I believe that the focus of our time at present should be spent on obtaining additional space. If we want to look to our past, I suggest that we do so only so that we do not repeat previous errors. Instead, I recommend we get excited about the future and embrace this opportunity to transform the property into a school Everett can be proud of. So, the plans have already been drawn up that we are using as a blueprint. So here you will see floor plans for Pope John to become a junior high school. It is very exciting to see that there is ample instructional space, including 46 classrooms, science labs, small group spaces, art centers, a media center, a technology center, a guidance suite, two elevators for accessibility, and of course cafeteria. These spaces provide space for our 7th and 8th grade students to have a conducive learning environment for 21st century learning. And again, these conceptual plans were drawn before my tenure and recommended 7th and 8th grade classrooms. So this was something that was discussed in the past, and I would tend to agree. The space implications are profound. This year, there were 15 classrooms used for 7th and 8th graders at the Lafayette, 11 at the Caverian, 11 at the Madeleine English, 10 at the Parlan, and 8 at the Whittier. That is a total of 55 classrooms. By equally distributing all the 7th and 8th graders from across the district, Pope John's 46 classrooms will absolutely meet our needs. And this says nothing of the fact that the school has a cafeteria, gym, office space, and an auditorium. Opening Pope John would allow us to achieve more optimal class sizes at the K-6 level as well. It opens the door for rooms dedicated to music and art in all buildings. It aids our district-wide strategic library plan, which we just passed, and gives us more opportunity for specialized services. It also gives our existing K-8 schools, again, more room to accommodate the likely population spike that we have been seeing and that we believe we will continue to see over the next few years. So this slide shows the positive ripple effect of establishing a junior high school. Currently, we have 527 7th graders, 541 8th graders, for a total of 1,068 students. Our projections for next year call for 1,082 7th and 8th graders. Pope John would eliminate overcrowding in all of our K-8 schools except for the Parlan, which would go from being 256 students over capacity to a far more manageable 38 students over capacity in grades K through 6. On the other hand, the Caverian would go from being 221 over capacity to being 0 over. The Lafayette would go from 165 to 0, and the Whittier from 75 to 0. The Madeleine English is not currently over-enrolled, but of course, it would also gain additional utilizable classroom space. So in other words, there would be very positive impacts across multiple buildings and multiple grade levels. So the reason for a 7th and 8th grade building is that first, there were plans already drawn up, so this has clearly been something that has been discussed previously. Plus, it will enable us to be more strategic and equitable about the courses that we offer and the time allotted for core content. For example, at this time, our ELA blocks actually range from 45 to 90 minutes in the different K-8 schools due to the number of teachers we have covering six homerooms versus four homerooms. Even more, a place where 7th and 8th graders go every day to experience the kind of elevated learning that is befitting of that age group would be a school like this. Feedback that I received during my listing and learning tour was that we did not have enough tailored experiences for our middle school students, and the fact that they were in K-8 buildings really limited our ability to provide them with specialties that were geared towards them, with extracurriculars that were geared towards them. Pope John, on the other hand, would enable our 7th and 8th grade teachers to work quite closely on high-quality instruction and our schools to be able to provide electives and extracurriculars. We would also have space for after-school activities and clubs that are tailored specifically to these students in this age group. Obviously, a junior high would require a complete roster of professionals to support students. Staffing the building would require a mix of new and existing staff, led most importantly by our current 7th and 8th grade teachers, which is another reason that a 7th and 8th grade school building is a more viable option, because if we were to do a K-8, that would be more difficult to restructure. However, we've already put together a roster of positions that we would need to hire versus the ones that we currently have. Those that we need to hire would include nurses, custodians, cafeteria staff. However, current EL teachers, special education teachers, and paraprofessionals will also be integral to the success of an Everett junior high school. We would have to work with our partners from Elliott and other service providers on areas such as speech, physical, and occupational therapy. As I said, this would be a huge commitment from the city. Therefore, it would demand an equal effort from the Everett Public Schools to make sure we are giving our students everything they need. So I do want to be very transparent about the fact that yes, it will require, if we were to open this building, extra staffing. I want to also be clear that I view Pope John as critical to addressing overcrowding, but I do not view it as the solution to all of our concerns. In this scenario, we are not proposing to use the property to address our space concerns at EHS. Hopefully, our application for a brand-new high school will be accepted by the MSBA, and we can begin the long-range plan of creating a new EHS with ample space for a complete range of cutting-edge CTE programming. However, we also do have some other options we can explore if that is not the case. But in the meantime, I feel more comfortable bringing 7th and 8th grade students and staff from around the district into one school than I do about separating Everett High School students into two buildings. Again, we're trying to make the biggest possible impact, and I believe that is achieved through moving the 7th and 8th grade. As you all know, a high school is a cohesive place, and especially one that has CTE programs like we do. All of the CTE programs, the CTE funding, the Chapter 70 funding, all funds under that umbrella, and these are things that we would have to consider if we were to separate our 9th grade. That would also go for athletics as well. So there are many domino effects if you are to separate your 9th grade out. However, to turn to the issue at the high school, there have also been plans drawn up to solve the overcrowding by either rebuilding the old high school or exploring an EHS campus. So again, these are plans that predated me. The plans for rebuilding the old high school and converting it to a pre-K-8 school were priced at $145 million in 2018. So again, I'm just presenting a plan that was previously drawn up. I'm not saying we should make the old high school into a pre-K-8, but that's the cost figure I have. Also, I understand that that is an outdated cost figure, but I want to be able to provide some kind of grounding for where we are. Another plan that was drawn up was using some or all of the property across Elm Street, which features a mix of DCR and City of Everett property. The idea definitely had appeal because it would give us that high school campus feel. Ideas included the construction of a freshman academy, for example. Those plans were drawn in 2019 for a cost of $67 million. Again, I'm not saying that that is what we should do. I'm just saying this reiterates the fact that deliberative work has been completed over the course of many years, far beyond, I didn't get here till 2020, concerning the district's need for more space. And if this were to be revisited, potentially would not just be a freshman academy. From what I've heard from others, there may be a desire to include additional CTE space. So again, these are plans for us to revisit. So to end, to show all the comparison of costs, which are probably what everyone's most interested in, I do want to start by saying I am not the final word on finance, bonding, and construction. I can only tell you the figures that you see on the slide, which are based on previous plans that we have, and then also based on current consultations regarding the modulars and Pope John. After site visits to Pope John with an architect, representatives from electrical, plumbing, and technology providers, our cost estimate to prepare Pope John to reopen as a school is between 30 to 40 million, which will account for all essential work and offers a pretty hefty cushion. In fact, I'm coming in at well above what they stated, but you know, everything I know about renovations, you want to overestimate, so I would prefer to overestimate than under. And so again, we want to just make sure we have some budget flexibility. The cost of this project when weighed against a new building is fractional. For example, this building, built in 2007, cost 350 million. So while I know 30 to 40 million sounds like a lot of money, when we're thinking about the fact that we do in fact need a new building, it's just about what are our options here? You know, it's definitely a fraction of that cost. Also, as you can see on this slide, for the old Everett High School, the EPS received the estimate of $145 million in 2018 to convert the building into a pre-K-8. And I would not guess to, make a guess as to how much that number would increase up until now. And the other option to expand EHS by constructing a building across from the EHS, that was costed out at 67 million in 2019. Finally, to bring up the route that we have discussed before, which would be modular units, that would cost us $3 million at four of our schools, which would be a total cost of $12 million. I know that our previous facilities director asked for $2 million for modulars at the Caverian, which was considered by the city council last week, and I appreciate that. But after looking more closely at the proposal, that did not account for the site preparation, excavation, utility hookup, hookups to communication panels, et cetera. Another reason it's always good to kind of overestimate. So the, it's actually, it's probably good that they did not approve it because we would need more by way of 3 million. So it is my final recommendation that our most timely and most fiscally responsible option for now is to opt for Pope John, with hopefully a simultaneous or soon thereafter discussion regarding our options for the high school, because we do have several different ones with buildings that are, or plots of land that are existing. I know that there are other estimates being drawn up for Pope John, and if there are discrepancies between estimates, I would just respectfully ask that all of the experts get together and rectify them. And when they do, I can tell you without hesitation that it will be a worthwhile investment for the city and for the Everett Public Schools.
Ms. Lambert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I threw you to the superintendent. In reaching out to school committee colleagues around the state, it's my understanding that you can have both a core project and an accelerated repair project through the MSBA. And we've just completed one with the Webster. So we would be eligible to apply again. Would Pope John fall under accelerated repair or?
So we're still in conversations with them about that, because the accelerated repair program covers roofs, windows, there's a couple of different things that it includes. However, I'm not sure if they have changed that, because now there are inclusions of renovations of full school buildings across the state. So we are trying to get an answer to that question. So for, at this point, I'm unsure.
And it's partly because I had been reviewing other projects and didn't notice there were several renovations, and they were ballpark in that area for the total cost, not the reimbursement, but for the total cost. The other thing, I've been advocating for a junior high school or middle school for a very long time. And I love that you focused on the impact, not just for potentially middle school and those students in that grade level, but also the impact to the younger students, because I think sometimes what happens is when you have 7th and 8th graders in a building with kindergarten and first graders, they're not allowed the independence to explore. But then also, you have kindergarten and first graders exposed to ideas that maybe they're not ready yet. And so there's two sides to that coin. So focusing on being a kid, being, you know, and then those middle school years, they're very different. So, and I appreciate that in the work. I know, I have nightmares about January, which is the timeframe when our next wave of new students will come in. And that's been a pattern that's happened annually. And so that's why I appreciate the due diligence and would caution anybody to look at our enrollment over the last several years. And we have two waves of increased enrollment in September and then again in January. Thank you.
And you have a quick, yes.
May I respond? And if I may, just to add to your point, I, you know, junior highs, I don't know if everybody has a sentimental feeling towards junior, I went to a junior high. I know they, you know, have kind of faded into the past, but I do believe it's a successful model. And another thing that we, another positive impact we see coming of this is that we do have these K-8 schools where all of our students converge in the 9th grade. We know that to be a particularly difficult transition in a school building that's very large. The benefit of having a 7th and 8th grade building is you're doing that convergence earlier with half the number of students. So you're that much more prepared when you get to high school.
And if I may, just one more thing. And you also have consistency across the grade levels. And you know, you have similar curriculum, you have common planning among all of the city, which I think is really important in preparing our students, and the idea sharing that will come from that is really important from an educator's perspective.
I have Mr. Bowles.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Superintendent. I took lots of notes. And one of them, just want to make sure that I understood correctly, the number of, let's say that we were to, not we, the city would go ahead and open Pope John and renovate, the number of students that would alleviate our, all of our other schools right now? Is that 1,020 or is that 1,200?
So it's 1,068 for this year. And for next year, our projection for 7th and 8th is 1,082.
Got it. And so if we were to pull them from all of our schools, the only one, we would pretty much reduce to zero, the only one that we would still have a little bit over would be the Parlan?
Right. So we would be over 36 students from our K-6. And however, we would be opening significant classroom space, so that overage would not, I don't know how to say it better, but it wouldn't hurt as much, you know, when you have, because then we're opening additional space for students that currently are already there.
Got it. Right. Okay. Yeah, that was my own question. Thank you. That was excellent. I appreciate it.
Ms. Sinek?
Thank you. There's rumors, and I just wanted to see and have you clarify this. Are kids in the hallway in closets learning?
So we have, as you know, has been approved by this body, we have restructured several closets to make them learning spaces. So we did the athletics closet, we did a storage closet, we also restructured the CHA space at the Caverian. So there have been several spaces that we have sort of retooled, and yes, some of them were formerly closets. We do have students who are doing small group instruction intervention pullout in the hallways, if not more substantial instruction as well.
And is that in the high school or the elementary schools?
That is mostly in the four K-8s that have our greatest over enrollment.
Okay. And I'm not sure, Madam, if we can ask the mayor a question or through the chair?
Through the chair.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, through the chair, do we have anything put on paper yet on what it costs to fix the Pope John, or have you done any analysis at all?
Mr. Mayor?
Your thought on this?
Are you prepared to answer that question?
The numbers that the superintendent's sharing with you is the numbers that we have worked on the last few years. So it's, the numbers to renovate Pope John that we got in 2019, I believe, was about $50 million to build new. A new middle school would cost us about the same with our reimbursement rate, so we opted to look at building a new middle school. When we went to look to find a new middle school, the options weren't really going to be well-received by Florence Street Park as one, taking out the rec and the rink as another, I think losing those in the police station, we had no place to bring the police station to, we'd have to build a new police station with another 60 million. So there's a lot of flaws to track, so we found locations across 16. And at that time, the superintendent at the time did not think K-8 students would want to cross Route 16. So we were limited with finding locations. And then we, so as you know, CTE and middle schools were something that this administration always focused on and wanted to do. You know, like I say, 8th grader, you know, the difference in 8th grade, having 7th and 8th grades mixed with K-6 is not appropriate. So it was something we wanted to see happen, is build a middle school, which is why we filed an MSBA application to build a new high school with CTE. And as most people know, where I'd like to build it is down at River Green, where we have our tennis courts and our multipurpose field, where we're building the canoe and kayak launch for our crew team, where we have the tennis courts for our tennis team. So I'm trying to build a campus-like high school. That's the plan. It's a plan I'm going to continue with. I hope to find out in December, then if not December, they'll vote on in February. I've been actively working that to get the money for Pope John. We'll have to apply in January for the accelerated repair program. I don't want to have two competing applications, because then they'll look at me like I have my, you know, we don't have our act together. So the act is that we will build a new high school with CTE programming to renovate Pope John if the, if people want to spend $50 million. And then we get approved to build a new high school, we look to raise another 100 million. And then we get approved to build a new high school, we look to raise another 100 million. That's 150 million on the taxpayers. You know, I'd love to do everything. I'd love to be Santa Claus, you know? I really would. But there are people that are starving, unable to pay their tax bills now, unable to find housing, the rents are skyrocketing, inflation's at all time high. I just can't levy them with an increase of amount of taxes that we'd like to. So unfortunately, I am the person who is, I guess, the steward of the tax aller. I got to make sure that we try to spend our money, you know, in the best way possible. And some people had mentioned using opera funds. And we've had those community meetings, and I employ people to come to those meetings, because if we were to use all those monies for one purpose, then the Eliots of the world and the La Comunidad, the Loomis, the Everhaisian Community Centers, all these different centers that are looking for funds, they don't get their resources, community growers and so forth and so on. So it's a lot of balancing going on, right? So we have a plan, and I will, I would love to meet with the school administration at any time they'd like to meet and to go over the plans that we've had. I know they have Mr. Marashi now here, so I'm sure Mr. Marashi can share a lot of this information that we've worked on for years at the schools. But, you know, it's not something I want to do, you know, we can do, I mean, I would love to have community input on all this. To answer your question, in another week or so, two weeks, we hopefully will have Frank from, I believe it's MMA Architects or SMA Architects, I forget the name of the company, who did the initial report in 2019, cost of construction from 19 to 22 of, are not the same, unfortunately. Does that answer your question?
A little bit, but how do you feel, I know you were pushing for Pope John to be a senior housing.
Yeah.
How do you feel of the change for a middle school for 7th and 8th, which you promote the 7th and 8th grade, as you stated? How do you feel maybe of a change at this time, because we do need that, as you see? Do you have that in your mind of thinking about that of a change as well, just so, you know, taking that out of your box?
I'm open to anything, you know, I haven't, I think I'm maybe one of the only student, only representative on the school committee that has a child in the school system, you know, so I have an 8th grader, you know? And I would love if she was able to, you know, someday had gone to a middle school like I did. I went to the Parlin, like I think some of us who were born or raised here went to the Parlin, and I had the great, best experience at 7th and 8th grade. I'd love to see it. You know, so we have a competitive application, an MSBA application right now to build a new high school. If we get approved, that's going to be $100 million, the city side at least, you know, because it's going to be, you know, a half a billion dollar project to build a new high school. I am, as you know, it was the CTE programs that started in the schools because this administration, with the support of the city council, that we supported all the renovations to build all these CTE programs here. I think every child should have the ability to get through that, to experience CTE. You know, I heard the parent who said that she couldn't get a kid into CTE, a vocational program in Wakefield, because of the, you know, didn't want to leave here, we didn't have the program in Everett, didn't want to go to Wakefield, or couldn't get on there. It's imperative that we teach kids, not just push all the kids to college, but, you know, plumbers, electricians, biotech, life sciences, green tech, there's so many industries out there that I'm looking, I'm having conversations with daily, you know, at the Exelon Power Plant, I have green technology companies looking to come to the city. They want to partner with us if we build a vocational program to train the next generation of employees, right? These are things that I work on every day. I don't put them on Facebook, I don't put them on the paper every day, but these are the things that we're working on, we're doing. So to answer your question, but I want to convert Pope, I don't, so the accelerated program, I forget the whole, the name of it, is in January when you have to put your application in. I don't believe in December we're going to get a vote at the MSBA from my sources. I believe that's going to happen in February. I don't believe there's a reimbursement rate for accelerated repairs. There was for the roofs, I don't know if there is one for a full reclamation of a building. I have to get that answered. If it is, and we, you know, we're getting denied, you know, for a new high school, then, you know, we got to make a move. You know, I was ready to make a move on building a middle school on the other side of Route 16, because I had some ample space to do that. This was prior to, of course, the superintendent here, with even a catwalk from the stadium over to a site. But, you know, the school administration at the time just didn't feel comfortable. You know, and I get it, kids crossing 16 is not the best thing, right? It's not the best thing.
The other question is, we get money for...
But senior house, if you want to talk senior house, so we, so we, so we didn't purchase a building for $10 million. We bonded a building for $10 million, and we haven't paid $10 million yet.
We have a loan.
We put bands out, short-term bands, and Eric Demas can explain it to you. But that built, that Pope John will generate taxes to pay that $10 million loan over 30 years. So it's no cost to the city. We built 77 senior units at St., that's the question you asked me about Pope John, you know, so we built 77 units of senior housing on St. Teresa's and six three-bedroom condos for first-time homeowners. We had 560 applicants for 77 units. So, so, so yes, we took a vote, the city council took a vote to buy Pope John. If we didn't take that, we wouldn't have this building. We wouldn't, it would probably have been sold, and the developer would have been already developing, and there's probably more housing, right? Because that's all you see these days is housing. But you have to continue with the economy, you need new growth. Because if you have no new growth, we'll have no teachers, no police, no fire, no infrastructure. And I know people don't really understand what new growth really encompasses. But if you don't have new growth, you die as, you die as a city, like moratoriums on construction, you die as a community. You're unable to afford inflation going up, the cost of doing business. Get back to your point. So we took a vote, city council took a vote to purchase Pope John for senior housing. And there was senior veterans housing. And you're right, there was never a talk about family housing. But you know what? 68 units for families who are making between 30 and 60% of AMI, those are families that we know. Those are housing units for people who actually will have, I don't know about kids learning in closets, but I know about kids living in closets. I've been in houses where kids live in stairwells. I've been in those houses, day in, and just recently, day in and day out, sleeping in those kind of quarters. It's a little more different than a closet, that's not a closet that you think in your house, like the linen closet. These aren't those types of closets. So, you know, let's, apples, apples. But we took a vote, purchased the building, we had to put our RFP out, we finally got a developer, new council, everything's different, right? It's always different. So now they, that's up to them. They want to dispose of the building for senior housing, veterans housing, and now a new caveat, family housing, which I'm all for. I'm all for family housing, you know, we need family housing. If they don't want to vote for it, we own the building. So what would happen at that point in time? If we get denied to build a new high school, this is going to be 50, 60 million. 50 was, 50 was back in 19. If we don't get the award to renovate it from the state, from the MSBA, and it goes on the taxpayers, the taxpayers got to vote for that. City council will have to make the decision. That's if I bring it for them, before them, right? Or we just dispose of the property and it gets developed. But something has to be done with the school, overcrowding of schools. I do like the fact that we're going to be coming up with a whole new attendance, a whole new program regarding checking residency and all that great stuff. That's wonderful to hear that that's going to happen. You know, I have some former PIC employees that work for me, they tell me some crazy horror stories about that office. But, you know, so I'm all for middle schools, I'm all for K through 6, a middle school, and a brand-new high school vocational program. That's the track that I'm taking. That's where I'm going.
Thank you. Just a question, the Old Heaven High School?
Yeah.
Is that something we can use?
Yeah, absolutely.
Right away for, say, a 7th and 8th? If we can't get the Pope John?
It's a great alternative. We have, you know, we have 600 kids in there now. The school was probably built for, I believe it's 1680, I could be having my numbers wrong, I haven't looked at it in a while. But it was a high school at one time. I graduated out of that high school and was fine when I was there. So there's plenty of, and the thing is, it's an asset that we own. So if it costs more to renovate, it's an asset that we own. So we're just increasing the value of our own property. So when we do offload it, if we put a new roof, a new heating system, we put new stairwells in, we're just increasing the value of a property that we do own, which is supposed to go to senior housing. Because that was the vote that many of you on the city council took when you built this new building here. Part of that vote was to build senior housing there. And so eventually that has, you know, so...
Things change in life, so...
Things change, but when you make votes on certain things, you're not supposed to change, you know?
Right, but the economy changes, so you have to...
Well, the economy changes, but you take votes, you're supposed to stick by those votes. But, but, but yes, so if we needed to look at building, you know, some space, you know, if we can't get, if Pope John is not in the new Parlin, and we need to look at the high school for, to create some space to reduce some overcrowding, you know, I know the Devon School, the alternative program there is about 80 students, and the school was built for 300. You know, I don't know how many kids of those, kids at the Devon School are tuitioned in that aren't ever, you know, residents. So is that something, we look at that building and say, you know, that's why I think I need to have a good conversation with superintendent and the administration, and we need to meet like once a week and continue to hammer this out together and just work out this together and come up to a great plan for the residents to like, you know? And that's what I'm prepared to do. So thank you.
Thank you.
I have Ms. Lambert.
And I just want to clarify one thing about the Devens, because I've received several inquiries over the last two weeks about underutilizing the Devens. And I've pointed everyone to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education website, which shows that therapeutic day programs such as the Devens do have a much higher square footage per student requirement, because it is a therapeutic school. So while at an outside glance, it may look one way, the way that the space is utilized is very important. And that space does not include common space like hallways, cafeterias, and such, it's educational space. So, so the ratio is different for the Devens and the requirement. But I, I mean, I think, let's meet, collaborate, and move forward.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I threw you to Superintendent. Madam Superintendent, a couple of things. One is that I know you had said that up in your presentation about staff, and if Pope John was to be acquired for a 7th and 8th grade school, is that, so some of these, the schools, I believe it's the Lafayette, the Mattie, the Parlin, I'm sure maybe the English, all those schools have two assistant principals. Now, would it be, I guess, cost-effective if we were to, again, this is in hindsight, if we had acquired, is that where the enrollment would go down drastically in some of those schools, would be able to transition some of those possibly assistant principals into a principal and a vice principal that they, instead of having a higher, I mean, because my guess is that, so for instance, if the, you know, the Pope John went, excuse me, Parlin went down a couple hundred students, I mean, I'm assuming we wouldn't need to, for a K through 6, two vice principals there?
So I'm very happy to explore that option if we ever get to that point.
Okay.
Absolutely. I do just want to clarify one thing. The 30 to 40 million estimate was done this past week. I know that I was referencing estimates from 2019. The floor plans for the Pope John 7th and 8th were from before I arrived, but we did receive an initial cost out of 30 to 40 million just this past week. We're there again today, and that's a conservative estimate. In fact, the number that they gave us was well under that, but I'm just, again, I'm trying to make sure that we are really overestimating, because we know with COVID, with materials, with all the different things that come up in a renovation, you know, that we want to be conservative.
Okay. And the other, my other final question is, would there be room at Pope John for some CTE classes there at all or no?
No. And I very much appreciate the conversations about CTE, but I, if we are going to discuss CTE, we do need to be thinking big, we do need to be thinking more money. I want, this building costs $350 million. I appreciate that we're talking about all of these things that we want, but then we're also talking about, you know, these amounts of money maybe being too much. So we can't have it both ways. Either we're going to go lower on the price and get less, or we're going to go all in and get more. One thing that I don't think we can do, however, is wait 10 years to get a new school building, and that school building to just be a high school. We need to, I feel like we're, in some of these conversations, it's almost felt like a new school building would be a nice-to-have. I want to be very clear that I'm saying to you as the school committee from the superintendent, so that I have given everybody fair warning, a school building is a need-to-have, it's a need-to-have five years ago. So whatever this body determines to push forward and advocate for, I want it to be very clear, I'm advocating, because this is the need, you are the school committee, we are here to support the students, we are here to advocate for the students. I wouldn't be doing my job if I didn't say very clearly that we need a school building, as Jeannie once put it, or as the chairwoman once put it yesterday. We need it like 10 yesterdays ago.
Thank you for that, Madam Superintendent. And this is through you, Madam Chair. I did discuss, I know last week at the meeting, Councilor Stephanie Smith brought it up about, you know, doing the tour through the building, just to see, and I know she had asked for the council to go and tour it. If you could, I would like to, and I did tell this, and she, excuse me, asked her this, and she was in whole highly favor of it, is that if you could reach out to her personally as the chair of the school committee and ask that if members of the school committee could also tour that building, because I think we need to also see that as a body. I know we can't do it as a whole, because we probably, I don't want it with the open meeting law and so forth, but if you could request, actual request, put a request into the members, or probably to Mr. President Hamlin, that we would be interested. I know, I'm sure all the members here would be interested in touring that building also.
Well, I would, I would ask the administration to set up that tour. I mean, that would really be a function of the administration to do so.
Well, I know, I know it's going to go through, but the school, the council itself already has a request into, to the mayor's office to see it, but just as part of that request, yeah, we include us in that.
We could make that as a form of a motion this evening.
Yes, and I would like to make that motion.
One second. And just, just to kind of stress that, yeah, we need schools yesterday, you bet we do. When we started just two weeks ago, we had 506 students in the freshman class. We now have 630. So, actually, it was 506, and now we're at 630. So, you know, all these plans are great, but we need action now.
Agreed.
And I'm going to say something, all right? I don't want to get too personal or emotional, but if I had a special ed kid that was being pulled out of his regular classroom to be serviced in the hallway, hell hath no fury like me. And I think, I think we need to really respond now. This isn't like, and I get what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, I totally get that. I would never do that, because you've never done that. But we need business, we need to do something now, not tomorrow. You know, that's great, we're going to have all these meetings. You know what? Set of the meetings, let's get right down to the beer basics and get this done. That's all I'm going to say. Do I, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, do I ever like go like this when you're talking?
Can I, can I say something?
Yes, absolutely.
You said special needs students are being pulled out of their classrooms? Can you, can you?
Sure, if you have an IEP and you need like special help with a particular area?
Yeah.
You're being pulled out.
You've seen that happen? No, I asked you, I asked you, I asked you, have you seen that happen?
No, because I, I know my place, I'm not walking through the schools every day. No.
I've been, I've been in the buildings. Special needs students aren't pulled out into the classroom. Interventionists pull kids who have IEPs, like my daughter, and we'll work with them in the hallways, and the hallways are beautiful, they're actually nice and spacious, and kids are all in their classrooms, so they use, they use the hallway as an area, have one or two students with a teacher, and no one's interrupting them, and they're learning in their classes.
So the special...
It's been, it's been happening in the school system since I've been in school. And I graduated in class of 1991.
So you don't think a high school kid would...
So class of 1991, kids have been taken out and worked with. I was in remedial math reading at the Caverion, at the...
Well, that explains...
Excuse me? That explains it? Excuse me? You should be ashamed of yourself.
Don't go, don't go there with me.
You just said, that explains it? As a chairwoman, you just said that? I'm done.
Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chairwoman, you just made a derogatory comment to me, saying that explains it, when I was trying to give you, trying to tell you something about my own personal experience in school. I don't want to cross debate this. The presentation was great. in school. I don't want to cross debate this. The presentation was great. I loved the presentation. It was something that we worked on. I agree that we need additional classroom space. I agree. I totally agree. I'd love to build a brand new school right now. Okay? I would love to. But we also need affordable housing for seniors and veterans and families. And that was something that was passed three years ago. And you know what? If the city council does not want to sell the building to, to the neighborhood developers, and then we have that building, we'll look to see if we can build a middle school and renovate that school. We'll see what the costs are, and we'll see what the implications are. I also have plans to build a new police station. I mean, there are so many things that are going on right now. I, I have not just one department to worry about. And listen, I love children more than cops and firemen and the rest of them, okay? So I want to help our children, but I also want to help our children be able to afford to stay in there too. Their parents are already struggling with high rents and food costs and other, other things. That's the, that's, that's, it's not, you know, the superintendent should be fighting for new schools. That's her job. And I, I, I support her. That's her job. But my job is that I, I have to make sure that people can afford to live here. You know how you tackle the affordable housing crisis? You build more housing. You build more and more housing because then it eventually reduces the cost of rents. Yeah, most of the housing we're billing down to 16 of the luxury units, but we have 10% inclusionary. We have linkage fees that go to the affordable housing. And once we can build a viable transit system, then we can build more and more housing with less and less cars. And that's what I'm trying to get done here. I'm trying to do it all. I don't want to fight with you. I love you. You're, you're a dear friend of mine. We're neighbors, for Christ's sake. When this is all over in 10 years, or five years, four years, whatever it is, we got to drive by each other and see each other. But your children, my friends, your husband, yes, we stick around. We're, we're friends. Let's not get, let's not go there. Let's try to resolve this together. Yes, we need to meet. And, and you say, you know, have meetings. I mean, no, we just need to meet regularly and just discuss so we can, with the finance team and understand the implications on people's, on people's homes, on, on their rents. I mean, you know, when you raise taxes as a landlord, who do they look to? They look to the person renting. They raise their rents, right? And with utility costs going up and everything, it's, it's hard for people to swallow right now. And we're hearing from a small, small little section that comes to these meetings. We're not hearing from these 70,000 residents that live in the city. And I say 70 because that's how many do live in the city. I know we have 50 on the books, but we have about 70 that live in the city. Okay? So we have a lot of residents that live here. And they're having a tough time living in this community, living in this area, right? So, you know, I mean, that's why St. Teresa's to me was, you know, like, like, I mean, that's why Pope John for me was a great place for affordable housing. But if that's not the case, you know, I, I want to continue to look at opportunities to build more affordable housing units in the city. And I want to also work with you as the chairwoman and the superintendent and her staff on building more classroom, suitable classroom space, whatever it may be, however we can get kids learning in a good environment.
Mr. Mayor, I'm just talking about when the interventionist takes out the kid to be serviced. Kids with, with special needs, one of the biggest things that you have to fight is their own feelings of importance of, like, they feel bad already because they don't learn like everybody else. So when we pull them out in the hallway, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's not a beautiful hallway for that kid that's in the ninth grade, that's being singled out. He doesn't want to. I mean, like, they have low, low self-esteem. And if, and if we're doing that, we're not doing them right. That's all I'm saying, Mr. Mayor.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, but I mean, the, today, most parents want their kids to get IEPs because they want them to get more time on taking the, the MCAS and certain exams, okay? So, I mean, that's what I'm getting from a lot of parents. They've been fighting the schools. I'm sure, I'm sure you got lots of, a lot of, a lot of parents asking for their kids to be on IEPs. And the way that the schedule is done here through the academies program, they're giving these kids that, all kids are, most kids are seeing, I think, interventions these days for extra, they have periods now built in their calendars that they go to interventionist for history or sign, four or five core classes. And they're not, they're not, they're not in the, in the hallways. They're going to, they're going to a classroom with the interventionist. So the kids that get pulled out, sometimes the kids in the hallways work on art projects. So, yeah, I've seen it working. I, I haven't been to the school this past year, and then since, maybe since COVID, but, so I, I've seen kids working on art projects in classrooms. I plan on actually making, to go to a lot of the classrooms throughout the city in the next few weeks, just to kind of see how everyone is doing, the kids are and so forth, and, and truly get a real understanding of like what's happening in the buildings. I mean, I talk to a lot of people that are associated with the public schools, so, you know, I, so I don't want to keep laboring this. I don't know what we're doing with the piece, but thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chairman. And, you know, I don't want to have a hostile relationship with you, especially where you have guns in your house at night, you know, and, just kidding, just teasing.
Madam Chairman, let's move forward with the next item.
Well, we're going to take, we're going to.
You can't take a vote. That's only a superintendent update. You can do it on the second item. That item is a superintendent update, is only an update. On the item two, he can make a motion on that one.
Well, that's what I'm referring to.
We're not on that one yet.
Well, we are.
She didn't read it yet.
Yes, I did. Item number two, I read it.
Okay, I apologize.
That's okay. Okay, so I have a motion that's been made and seconded to send a letter to the mayor requesting that we be included in a tour of the Pope John and the old high school, or just the Pope John?
And the motion, if possible, if they can't do it during the week, also Saturday, because some of us work full time, so if we can do a Saturday morning, if possible?
Take any time you like to go. Just call me. I'll have the building open up for anybody on this, on this, on this group. Or you can do what Madam Christiano did, just go there on Friday and just go inside the building, right?
Okay, I did it. All right, motion is made and seconded to send a, just to send a request to the mayor's office to be sure to include the Everett School Committee on a update, you know, forthcoming tour of the Pope John. By the way, just one more thing before we make the, the vote on it. I, as the mayor mentioned, I, I did take a tour of the Pope John facility on Friday afternoon along with the deputy superintendent. And as a 1977 graduate of Pope John, the 23rd High School, it's looking fabulous. It's really looking fabulous. So.
That's the hard work of this administration to maintain the building. Thank you for noticing. We appreciate that.
Okay. Mr. Barrows?
Well, if the mayor just praised his administration for taking care of the building, that means the building is ready to give it to us so we can open a school.
It's different for a school. You, you know, as a school committee member, you know, the standards for a school are a lot different than just maintaining the paint and the walls and the floors and the ceilings and the exit. There's a lot more when it comes to a school. So, yes.
And on that note, if I may, the 20, was 20, no, 30 to 40 million dollars. You said that that was done recently?
Yes.
And that was a conservative number?
Very. We, I built a hefty cushion into that. The number that they gave us was much lower than that, but I wanted to make sure, again, I didn't want to be accused later of saying it was going to be something and that it was a whole lot more. So I figured it would be better to overestimate. But yes, that is recent. We'll actually have a, like a written out proposal later on this week. But again, I would also defer, I know that the, the city is getting a comprehensive review as well. And that's why I mentioned that, you know, to be able to look at those estimates and see what would be doable, I think would be great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, on the, Mr. Mayor.
Did we hire, did the schools hire someone to give an estimate?
Yes. So we have a house doctor, we have ENE, we have our plumbing, we have our technology group. So we have a lot of people who are already on contract that we had walk around with us.
Okay.
And we actually had somebody from your team as well who was there today.
My team that was there, was there today?
Yeah, they had to let us in the boiler room, so.
Yeah, no, I know Anthony Ferrante did, yes. I understand that, right? But you, so you have contract, ENE, the IT, the IT team that are doing the proposal?
Yeah, we also reached out to the group that had done the, the floor plans earlier and done the seventh and eighth grade and asked for the cost proposal. Again, we know that it would have been a while back, but we, we emailed them last week. We haven't heard back. I think it's the Mount Vernon Group.
The Mount Vernon Group, yeah.
Yeah, we haven't heard back from them. So if that is.
That's who's doing our.
Yeah, so that would be, but again, they're doing, so are they doing a review for seventh and, to make it a seventh and eighth grade building, or they're doing a review for what it would take to make it housing?
No, because, no, they're doing a, not to make housing, they're doing a review on just, not seventh and eighth. So I, I need to see, you know, now that having this, that is, that, we never had the plan, right? We never knew really what we wanted to do with the Pope John School. So I will let them know that, and if you have any documents you'd like to share with them so they can.
These are their floor plans.
Those are ours. So seventh and eighth plan. Okay, so I'll tell them the seventh and eighth plan, which they probably can just quickly, I'm sure that you got those from us, right? Okay, seventh and eighth. We'll give you a number.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Again, you know, when I voted a couple of weeks ago, I know that we were kind of split here, five to four, you know, I kept an open mind. I just, you know, want to put this out to the public. So I went to all three meetings of Pope John, talked to, talked with the, the neighborhood developers. But it was basically, you know, talking to some parents and also people that, residents that lived in, in that neighborhood, surrounding neighborhood and so forth. And I honestly, I didn't talk to one person down there. And that's why I formulated the opinion that they all wanted a school. Not one person said to me, hey, you know, let's keep it housing, let's keep it housing as much as we need housing. That was where I drew my conclusions on. I went to three, talked to many people down there. Some people were down there, probably talked to the same people. I know the mayor was down there at one of the meetings also and so forth. And that's how I drew my conclusion. It was, and then also, you know, talking to city council members too. And it just seems like, and I think you saw last week at the meeting, that the, the city council seems overwhelmingly in support of, you know, making it a, a school also, at least for the foreseeable future. So I just want to know, let people know that's where my vote came from. And that's, that was basically, that's, it was, it was, it was an education for me to get down and listen to people because I wouldn't have taken the vote I did two weeks ago to send that letter to, to the city council. You know, if there was a lot of people down there that said, hey, you know, let's, you know, we can't put a school here, just leave it at housing and so forth, then, so I just want that out there. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, so the motion is made and seconded to request that the administration make sure to include the school committee on any touring of the Pope John facility. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You're so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number three is to request approval of Evergreen Solutions' scope of work for the operational audit. We are fortunate to have representatives with Evergreen Solutions with us tonight to give a presentation on the operational audit that the school committee commissioned earlier this year. I respectfully request that we invite up Linda Riccio, I hope I'm saying that right, president emeritus, who has flown up here to be with us today.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to invite Ms. Linda, uh, Ms. Linda. Ms. Linda up. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. You're so moved. Welcome. If you could just state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Linda Rest, CEO, President Emeritus of Evergreen Solutions. Delighted to be here to share with you our proposal for an operational audit for Everett Public Schools.
Thank you.
Okay, each of you have a copy of the presentation. It's on my business card. So there for you if you want to take any notes while we're working along here. You'll have the opportunity. Okay, I'm going to be brief in my comments because I know you'll have questions after looking at the, or hearing the last agenda item. I know I'm going to get questions. So I'd like to address tonight who we are, our school district experience, our methodology for doing an operational audit, our tools for success, then slow down a bit to address our work plan, which is the most important item, our team, our timeline, and then some propaganda on why we can help you. Okay, moving to the next slide.
Who's, we're going to take a five minute recess? We don't have a corner. All right, we're back up. Go ahead. Okay, continue. All right, if we can have the next slide. Our experience is extensive. We worked in 46 states with tons of school districts. We've completed over 1,000 studies since Evergreen was formed in 2004. Our public sector
experience includes school districts, local governments, state governments, colleges and universities. We really have a dichotomous core competencies. We do management audits, operational audits, efficiency audits, call them what you will. They're based by the same structure. And we also do pain classification studies for the same public sector entities around the country. So we specialize in these two areas. Our school disexperience, I know you can't see that slide, that's why it's on paper for you, gives you some ideas to the breadth of our experience, starting with Miami-Dade, Los Angeles, and some of the big guys, all the way down to that tiny school district in San Saba, Texas, where I had to meet with the superintendent in the afternoon and he told me he couldn't meet at 3 o'clock because he was the only bus driver today for that day. So that's a real small school system. And you're comfortably in between. Okay, next. What's our methodology for conducting a study like that, like this? First of all, we developed a very detailed work plan, which we're going to get to in a couple of minutes, specifically designed for you. Not what we did in Needham, not what we did in Hamilton-Windham. You gave us 17 items that you wanted us to respond to, and those 17 items are in our work plan. It begins with an analysis of your objectives, your previous studies, your work already accomplished, as well as an analysis of data that we'll ask you to provide for us. We have a, we're going to establish a Dropbox and have data put in there, and we will study that data. Okay? We get a lot of input from internal and external stakeholders. We assess your organization, operation, performance levels. We compare you to other school districts, preferably in, in Massachusetts, although we have been known to go over state lines if needed. Next, we do a lot of resource utilization analysis and benchmarking. We recognize externally imposed work tasks and procedures. We know what the feds impose on you. We will learn very quickly what the city imposes on you. We will not make recommendations that are contrary to what your rules and regulations are. We'll study your policy manual, your board procedures manual. We'll, we'll do our homework before coming on site. We'll identify best practices, both yours and others, potential savings and costs, which you asked us to do in the RFP. We'll help you with detailed implementation plans and timelines. And we are senior staff who have done this many, many times. We'll talk about in a few minutes. What do we bring? What are our tools for success? First of all, we have operational audit guidelines that we bring to the table. We use those for our questions, for our discovery, for a look at your policies and procedures and your, your documents that you've created to implement board policy. We also have a best practices database, what we've seen, if we've done 200 of these studies, what have we seen through the years? What's, what's good in the community X for, and what will not work in community Y? We bring that to the table based in our experience. We also have focus group and interview guides that we use to, throughout the process, as well as business process mapping, metrics and organizational development. All these tools, instruments we bring with us will become on site. Okay, let's now go to the work plan. The work plan itself is on the next two slides, and it consists of 13 tests. And I'm going to refer you to our proposal as well. All right, project initiation, everybody knows what that is. We sign the contract, we meet in terms of what the timeline is of this study and talk about the instrumentation and tools and develop the Dropbox. Then we develop a preliminary profile of your school system. We look at financial information. We look at transportation, food service information. We develop various profiles of your non-instructional operations. Okay? We also ask you, who would you like to be compared to? Other school systems you aspire to be like, or ones that just happen to be in your area that we'd like to be compared to? And we'll get a good cross section of. And we'll get a good cross-section of those. Then we will have a team come in and conduct a diagnostic review of your operations. We will meet with a focus group of teachers, principals, assistant principals, custodians, again, cross-sections of employees to see what their wants, needs, and desires, and of course administrators in the central office. We'll be asking questions regarding the 17 tasks you've listed for our charge. That's phase two. And then we'll also be benchmarking against best practices that are current out in the field, what associations say and others. That's phase two. Task five through task 12, we're looking in-depth in various organizational areas. In task five, we're looking at central office management. Task six, HR management. Task seven, instructional staffing. We're not looking at curriculum instruction. You asked for us to look at instructional staffing, which will be included. Facilities use and management, there are several tasks you want us to look at there, and I didn't know quite sure why until I sat through the last hour of presentations, and now I know exactly why you want us to look at that area. Financial management, transportation, food services. On page 2-7 of our work plan, we went down your 17, um, tasks that were in your RFP as specified by your management team and the members of the board, a school committee, and we cross-referenced each of those tasks to our review process. So this will assure the school committee and the administration that we will cover each of the areas you'd like us to review, and we will develop a timeline, and we will develop a, um, structure where we'll be giving progress reports as to how, what we find in each of those areas as we go along. Okay? I can answer any questions about any of those areas when we get into the question-answer phase. My background, I used to be an assistant superintendent, I was a principal, I was a classroom teacher, I also worked for the Florida Department of Education as a project director and, um, policy analyst. Okay, as I said, I personally conducted two studies in the, in Massachusetts, both Needham and Hamilton-Windham, and I conducted of all those, uh, that beautiful slot in page two, I think it was, I'd done probably three-fourths of these school districts on that, including it first, when we first started Evergreen in 2004, spent 10 months in Los Angeles school district, uh, doing various projects, and I was happy to get home to Florida after that. Betty Russell's been with me for over a decade. She, um, is with, in Texas, she was with the Texas Comptroller's Office, she's a CPA, and she's managed over 150 performance reviews and academic studies. She specializes in school funding, financial management, and investments, but she also has some facilities studies, transportation studies. And then we will bring a cadre of other consultants who are specialized in transportation and facilities. Again, we will tell her this to meet your needs, I'm just talking about the senior, the two of us who are project director and assistant project director this evening. On the next slide, you'll see our timeline, uh, and I apologize for that, my copy doesn't have that misspelling on the top, but I guess that happens in PowerPoint. Our timeline, um, it would have been nice if we had the opportunity to start in September, but we're, we're anticipating October, and everybody knows what happens in a school district between November and Christmas, and, um, so we can promise you something, in January, your consulting team will be doing their writing, or probably your own, uh, Christmas break, but, um, we want to get our onsite work mainly done in October and early November, so that way, and, but there'll be constant follow-up, because, you know, we'll be uncovering things, and we'll need to follow up with appropriate staff, and, um, and that takes time to go back and forth. Our, we will be sending you a draft report, probably mid-January. Our draft reports are very comprehensive. They look like the final report. They're very thick, because they have a lot of recommendations, but they don't always have, only have recommendations, they have commendations. You guys want to know what you're doing good, I hope, and we will definitely acknowledge that as part of our review process. The final report will be prepared after we get input from whoever our designated project manager is, and whomever this district decides to share that draft report with. So at that point, I'm going to, oh, oh, my propaganda, let me just finish up. Why Evergreen? First of all, we think we bring, um, parallel and experience in conducting these types of studies. I made it through almost without water. We are nationally recognized and experts in K-12 operations, especially in the non-instructional areas. We really aren't, don't go into the curriculum and instruction and do curriculum audits, we really look at the operations. We bring a professional collaborative team. Our team that we bring you have been working together for years. They're not, uh, we're not bringing neophytes. They've been, we, we meet each night, as an example, we meet each night after the school day, or the district's day, so that we, so that our purchasing person can talk to the transportation person, and hear that in transportation, for example, some purchase orders were not approved, or whatever, but only by the intermingling of our team and talking about what we find out can we bring you the best product. We feel, we think our methodology is industry standard, and we think we bring you as well tested tools for knowledge transfer. And I can answer any question you'd like about the presentation, but I didn't want to belabor with, I grew up in New York and I talk fast, so I'm sure I talk too fast, but I'm here for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to our guest. So you mentioned policies, which is within our purview, as well as, you know, and one item I'm passionate about, in the recommendations, would you be able to identify impact of policies? Because, you know, throughout COVID, everything was reactionary.
Right.
And, you know, so as we get back to being more proactive, in line with, you know, our mission, um, would you be able to identify, you know, policies that we should prioritize? I'd love to do all of them.
Right, and with each of the areas, each, each of the areas that we're looking at, financial policies, HR policies, we will be looking at from that perspective. We'll also look to see if the board policy manual, for example, leads to some type of operational procedures, administrative procedures, or if there are no procedures for administrators to follow after the work.
Excellent, thank you so much. Thank you. Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to our guest. Ma'am, how much time are you and your team, how much time do you plan on spending up here in the district, uh, you know, to get this, uh, you know, the audit the way you want? How much time do you anticipate in being up here, and how much time involved?
Well, we're report-writing probably very little. We'll be using for clarification, Zoom and whatever. We will have a, a week we'll call our diagnostic week, and that's where we're, um, questioning what is in this system, as opposed to what should be recommended. And that's going to be a series of interviews and focus groups, we'd like to, any board member that, or committee member that would like to, uh, be interviewed, we welcome that opportunity. And if, if folks are not available, we can always follow up with Zoom meetings as well. Uh, Zoom is, as, as we all know, the creation of, of, you know, the COVID-19, uh, way of work, but we're back on the road. When we come to do the in-depth review, that would be probably spread over a two-week period, and depending upon what areas we're looking at, um, and I'd be going through there, some of these areas, like on here, um, the school board meetings and, and school committee issues and financial reporting, I can probably do that in one hour. Again, I can come onsite, do it, but some of these, the personnel one is quite extensive, you want a lot of work done in the personnel area, that will take my HR consultant several days here. So we will tailor around your needs.
Okay, thank you.
All the questions of the guests, uh, entertain a motion to excuse with customer, thanks. So moved.
Motion is made in second to excuse the guest with customer, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, you have been excused. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Madam Superintendent?
Yes, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Should we, um, take a vote on this?
Yep, so make a motion to, uh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to approve the request, which will, I, as I recall, Madam Chair, this was, excuse me, your request and the vice chair request, once you guys joined this, this school committee in the beginning of this year, and this body approved, so I'm glad that we are, uh, finally, uh, doing it. And so I'll make a motion to approve this, uh, the request of Evergreen Solutions' scope of work to conduct this operational audit.
I'll second. On the motion?
On the, um.
Ms. Sarni?
Did we have a cost of this, and also did we go out for bid on this as well?
Yes, we did. You guys approved that, and the cost is $150,000.
And was there any other, um, competitors?
No.
No? Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion is made in second for favorable action, uh, on the approval. Clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Six in the affirmative.
Six in the affirmative, you have so passed. Uh, I'd ask the superintendent to read the next order of business.
Yes, item number four is to request approval of the EHS student activity ledger. This is the last item regarding our student activities account that needs your approval for the 2022-2023 school year. The ledger is included in your packets, and it provides you with the closing balance for the 21-22 school year.
Fable action on the order?
I'll second.
Motion is made in second for favorable action on the order, the clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So moved, six-zero.
Six-zero, we have so passed. Clerk, uh, the superintendent can read the next order of business.
Thank you. Item number five is to request approval of out-of-state and/or overnight EHS music department trips for school year 2022-2023. These may not be the only trips, but these are ones we already know about, so I'll respectfully request approving five out-of-state trips. Um, the, you received a list in your packet, a U.S. band competition on Saturday, October 22nd, in East Cranston, Rhode Island. Our musicians will depart at 3:00 p.m. and return at 11:30 p.m. Another U.S. band competition is slated for Saturday, October 29th, in New Britain, Connecticut. Departure is set for 11:00 a.m. with a 1:00 a.m. return, early on October 30th. Our students are scheduled to complete, compete in three Winter Guard international events. The first is on Saturday, February 25th, in Trumbull, Connecticut. Departure is at 6:00 with a 1:00 a.m. return on February 26th. The second will be held in Monroe Township, New Jersey. Our students will depart on Friday, March 17th at 6:00 p.m., stay overnight, compete on the 18th, and return by 1:00 a.m. on March 19th. And finally, we are hopeful that we will once again qualify to compete in the WGI World Championships, which are held annually in Dayton, Ohio. This year, EHS musicians will depart by bus on Tuesday, April 18th, and return on Sunday, April 23rd.
Fable action on the order?
I'll second.
Mr. Mayor?
I just have to say how impressed I am that these kids spend this much time traveling to and from, the amount of practice that they, you see them every night in Glendale Park, um, it's just, the dedication, you have to applaud this program's dedication to, um, you know, what they, what they've done over the years, and what they continue to do, and, uh, and all they do for our, you remember as a veterans director, with all the things that they've done for Veterans Day, Memorial Day, and, um, just, uh, it's just, it's just, it's just good to see, that kids are this dedicated in, in the, in the department itself, just dedicated to, uh, something great like this. Just want to congratulate them for everything they've done.
Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to echo the comments of Mayor De Maria, um, the whole team there, the so, the, the instructors and so forth, Mr. O'Brien all the way down, and again, I've seen him several times in, in DC, but, um, as, as the mayor alluded to, is the amount of time they put into it, you know, the students themselves, with their staff, and, uh, you know, it's just, it's exemplary, and I just, um, I want to say I'm so proud of them, and I absolutely support this 100%, thank you.
So we have a motion, favorable action, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, you are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number six is to request approval of a field trip to Johnson &amp; Wales for EHS culinary arts students. This requires your approval, as it is an out-of-state trip. Culinary arts director Carolyn Parmenter and her team will take a group of culinary art student, students to Johnson &amp; Wales on Friday, October 21st. The day trip will feature a tour of the campus and a presentation by school administrators. It is not only an EHS trip, so our students will get the chance to meet and network with other culinary arts students from around the region.
Fable action. Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. But, again, this, um, group also needs, um, pat on the back. I mean, we've been up here, they've hosted, you know, for years and years now, and, you know, all the different events, and the amount of time that the instructors, but the, the students themselves put into what they do, and the product is absolutely amazing, every time they put out something is fantastic, so I will highly support this, but I just want to give a shout-out to the, uh, the culinary, the, the staff as well, the students also. Thank you.
Well said. Uh, motion is made in second for favorable action, all those in favor?
Aye.
On the motion?
I would be remiss also to say that, to echo, uh, including Mangan's comments, um, Ms. Parmenter and her entire team do, uh, an exemplary job, to use Mike's word, on the band, uh, they're doing an exemplary job there, and, uh, they're always there for our city event, uh, inaugurations and balls and so forth, so I want to thank them for all that they have done over the years and continue to do, and I wish them well. That sounds like a, actually a great little trip to Johnson &amp; Wales.
Uh, motion is made in second for favorable action, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, you are so moved. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number seven is to request approval of a fiscal year 2023 McKinney-Vento homeless education grant. This is a regular funding source in our continued efforts to provide academic opportunities and support services for our homeless students. This grant is in the amount of $35,000, and our budget and grants director Shirley Pang is in contact with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Assistant Director of Student and Family Support, Kristin McKinnon, on the proper implementation of this funding.
Make a motion to accept the grant?
Second.
Motion is made in second to accept the grant, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? You have so moved. But don't we have to approve it?
It's a roll call vote, please.
Motion is made in second to approve. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Six-zero, so moved.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Item number eight is to request approval of four EPS signatories from the central office team. Again, this is an annual housekeeping matter. With your approval, the EPS will designate myself, Deputy Superintendent Kim Tsai, Assistant Superintendent Kevin Shaw, and Chief Financial Officer Anu Jant as authorized signatories for the Everett Public Schools.
Fable action on the order?
I'll second.
Motion is made in second for favorable action on the item. Clerk will call a roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor De Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Six-zero, so moved.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Roman numeral seven is items submitted by school committee members, and we have one item request update at a future meeting regarding prevention, education, and resources for substance abuse in education, and this was submitted by, um, member, school committee member Lambert.
Ms. Lambert?
I would first like to amend, it was my oversight, and add my colleague, Ms. Sarni, to the item.
Motion is made in second to amend the item by adding Ms. Sarni's name to it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, you are so moved. Ms. Lambert?
Um, so, I added this because I'd like to invite, uh, district and administration employees that are working currently on, um, the objective of not just prevention, but resource connection for our families and students that maybe struggling with addiction. I, I think it's been an issue, you know, as a recovering addict myself, I know it's impacted families, I was very fortunate to receive the support, and, over time, um, and my family received the resources that they needed. So I know that as we go forward, second chances, you have to be alive to get a second chance. So, and this impacts not just individuals struggling with addiction, but their family members as well. So because of the short time notice, I wanted to give the personnel involved time to put together a presentation for us. So I'd like to make a motion that we invite them to the second meeting in October for a presentation to the full school committee.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to invite the team members to our school committee meeting, the second meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it, you are so referred. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. So our next items are under, oh, sorry, Roman numeral nine is, we have no items under subcommittee report, so Roman numeral nine is bills and payroll.
Mr. Mangan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion that we submit bills and payrolls in the amount of $2,095,237.60.
A second.
Motion is made in second to accept bills and payrolls.
Submit.
Submit bills and payrolls in the amount of $2,095,237.60. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Six zero, you have submitted.
Madam Chair, I thank you again. I'll move to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $2,095,237.60.
Second.
Motion is made in second to pay bills and payroll in the amount of $2,95237.60. Clerk will call the roll.
Mr. Barrows?
Yes.
Mayor Di Maria?
Yes.
Ms. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Mangan?
Yes.
Ms. Sarni?
Yes.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Six zero, we have so moved. Mr. Mangan?
Seeing we have no other regular, regular business, well, we do have two matters for executive session, Madam Chair, so I would like to make a motion that we, we leave the public meeting, go into executive session, and, and adjourn in executive session.
Motion is made in second to go into executive session and adjourn in executive session to discuss these matters. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it.
Oh, me, sorry, me. Oh, yes. So I just wanted to ask, or just to clarify that we were going to, I'm respectfully requesting that we postpone item number two until our regular meeting scheduled for October 17 at the request of the SEIU. However, we will stake, take up item number one in executive session.
So I'll make a motion to suspend item two in the October 17 meeting.
I'll second.
Motion is made in second to, to refer item two in the executive session to our October 17 meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, the ayes have it. Okay, we're going to go into executive session. Have a great evening, folks.